All right, it's seven o'clock. We'll go ahead and get started with tonight's workshop. We have, we do have a quorum of all supervisors here tonight. Thank you all, and thanks for all of our guests joining us as well. We'll go ahead and get the meeting started with invocation. Lord, thank you for allowing us all to safely join here tonight. Please be with us as we go about doing the county's business, and we ask for your guidance over these decisions and discussions that we have tonight. Let's pray for everyone's safety getting back home this evening, whether they be here or elsewhere in the county. Thank you, and God bless you and your son, Jesus' name. Amen. All right, I think we all have the agenda. I don't, I don't think we have printed copies tonight. Everybody have a copy to work from?
Yep.
I don't. Okay. Any adjustments needed to the agenda for this evening? All right. All right, can you? There we go. We're waiting for the first speaker, sir. Neil, can you hear us? There it is. Do we know who Roger is? You don't know Roger?
She is bright.
Okay, that's great.
Neil, were you able to hear us okay?
I can hear you fine. Thank you so much.
Right.
All right, great. Well, our first topic on the agenda is Neil Barber. Thank you, sir, for joining us. We've asked-
Glad to be here.
Yeah, we've asked Mr. Barber to join us tonight to talk about the role of the Economic Development Authority and help us to be able to make sure that we're providing good guidance to them as we move forward with economic development for the county. And I think we're turning it over to you, sir.
Okay, good enough. Well, thank you for allowing to be, you know, first up on your agenda tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you this evening there. As I understand it from the county administrator, that Taylor, that you have sort of wanted the EDA to sort of move in a new direction and have changed the name from the Economic Development Authority. First off, I'd just like to say that, you know, there, there, in the code of Virginia, there really isn't any difference between the powers that are given to an IDA, Industrial Development Authority, and an Economic Development Authority. So the, the powers that, that they have are the same. So there isn't any distinction, you know, in law between the two. In practice, across the Commonwealth, what's, what's happened is, is that industrial development authorities have, are sort of an older terminology that has been associated with business recruitment primarily, and the activities that go around business recruitment, such as building of industrial parks, constructing shell buildings, doing, you know, outward marketing to prospects, and typically those activities are associated with the powers of an industrial development authority. But even some industrial development authorities do other things other than that. And as economic development, the perception of economic development expanded, the code was amended to allow for a change in the name of industrial development authorities to economic development authorities. And it's more of a semantic difference in that the locality sort of wanted to have a broader perspective of what economic development was rather than just industrial recruitment. So they, a lot of localities have changed the name and they have sort of tasked their authorities to pursue activities beyond just industrial recruitment, or in some cases, they've sort of said industrial recruitment is not necessarily that important to us. We would rather you do other types of economic development. Just to give you an example, you know, commercial recruitment for there, small business development, tourism, promotion, even some things such as, I think I may have mentioned entrepreneurship development, such as activities, small business outreach and expansion. I'm on the Economic Development Authority here in Portsmouth, and we're heavily involved in redevelopment of commercial properties throughout the city, but heavily involved in the downtown area and the surrounding area. Most recently, as you may have read, you know, Portsmouth has passed a referendum allowing casinos, and the EDA owns the property that the casino will be located on, and we will be transferring that to a casino developer, which is not your typical, you know, industrial recruitment type of activity. So just wanted to explain a little bit of there. I think it's important, well, an EDA or IDA are really formed to carry out the economic development goals and mission of the Board of Supervisors. So to the extent possible that you can sort of help them understand what you would like to see in terms of improvements of the economy locally, that would sort of help them in terms of shaping their activities and work program going forward. So with that brief introduction, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have related to economic development authorities or IDAs and what the difference may be.
Well, thank you. We, we were aware that there's not a legal difference between the two, and we, our change was very much as you said, around trying to set expectations for going forward, and yes, that the industrial term of it is a bit more antiquated and not where most, you know, most future growth is necessarily headed. So I think the things you described are very consistent with what we've discussed. You talked about, you know, getting the direction for an EDA. From your experience, whether on Portsmouth or where you've advised others, what kind of documentation or what's the best method you're finding for the Board of Supervisors to be able to set, set that guidance and expectation with the EDA?
I don't know whether you have it or not, but a number of localities, you know, have sort of a some of their goals that they wish to achieve for the, their locality, whether it be a county or city. And oftentimes, the, the governing body, the Board of Supervisors, in your case, will sort of have a, some sort of strategic initiatives that they wish to pursue for the next year, next several years. And then those oftentimes have, that relate to their improvements of their economy. And it, to, to the extent that, that those, you know, your goals are articulated related to the improvement of the economy, anything that you can do to to refine or communicate those goals clearly to the the EDA, then they can use that as a launching point for developing programs and various types of assistance that would support those goals going forward.
So, Mr. Barber, you were involved in our IDA strategic planning process and developed a plan back in, was it 2013?
That's, yeah, it was a few years ago, yes.
Yeah, and in that plan, there was a lot of goals and objectives and a checklist in the back to follow to make sure it's all implemented. And I believe it was two years ago you came back and talked to the IDA about it, and the conclusion was it was still pretty accurate and pretty pretty timely still, that we should be following that plan. Do you still feel that way?
Well, I think that is a question that you really need to, to address as such. You know, at, at the time that I did the plan and, and I, you know, and came back and reviewed it with the the IDA at that time, you know, there, there was still a very sentiment that we needed to, you know, bring in businesses to the county and sort of help, you know, the county with the marketing of the, the industrial park and making that ready for businesses. The, you know, if you all feel like that you would like to put an emphasis on other areas, such as small business development, entrepreneurship, even workforce development, those kind of activities, then, you know, we should go back and revisit that plan and make the appropriate adjustments.
Yeah. I get, let me rephrase the question. Do, do you still feel that the action item, checklist, if you will, is the best way to manage the implementation of this plan? Even if it's modified?
I think the answer is yes. If you, if you have a outline of types of activities that will achieve your objectives, then it's important to monitor those over time to make sure that, that you're, you know, continuing to make progress to achieve your objectives, yes.
Okay, thank you. A lot of these things are in the plan. Acquiring land and attracting business and workforce development.
Is, is there a frequency that you find that those plans are updated?
The, I would recommend, you know, that they, that you look at your plan and update it, you know, periodically, particularly if you, you know, have had a, if you as a board would like to see a sort of a change in direction, you know, in the the activities of the EDA. So typically, you know, an annual review of a plan is, is not warranted. Typically, there hasn't been enough change in the economy or enough progress on the activities to warrant an annual review. But typically, you know, every three years, every five years, you know, you should, you should pull it off the shelf, dust it off, take a look at it, and then see, you know, what, what needs to be modified or changes, changes made. In the times that we're living in now with the changes in the economy as the COVID-19 has impacted all of our localities, and it really changed the way businesses conduct their business, I think it, I would recommend, you know, most localities or EDAs take a look at the, what they're doing and how they're doing it to make sure it's consistent with the economic conditions that we face.
Yeah. Well, it's my opinion that the plan we have is a pretty good plan, and if we just follow it, and the milestones that are in it and track the progress.
Got a tool already in place.
Yeah.
Well, and it's probably pretty good timing because we asked the EDA to create a report in January of their progress for 2020, and I think an appropriate piece of that would be to reflect where they are on the bigger plan, not, not just that year, but you know, among that year, how much progress did he make toward moving forward? So, okay, that's, that's helpful. You've got three board members who joined effectively within the last, yeah, in less than, less than 12 months. So we're, there's a learning curve here going on for several of us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, as, as a board, have you all sort of had any discussions? I know it's been hard to meet. I see that you're meeting actually in, in person, which is not the normal way that a lot of governing bodies have been meeting recently, which I think is good because you have an opportunity to talk face to face. But I don't know whether you've had an opportunity to amongst yourselves to sort of say, you know, these are the things that we would like to see changed in our economy, or issues that, that we are facing that need to be addressed locally to support our economy. And it, it would be helpful if you've had those discussions to be able to articulate those to, to the EDA so that they can take appropriate actions to, to address them.
And the Planning Commission.
Yep. True.
So to answer your question, I think it's a little bit of a mixed bag there. We have agreed as a board, although it was before David joined, but I think in conversation, I think you're aligned. I don't want to speak for you, though. We've identified our top priorities for the county. Economic development is one of those. We've talked broadly about what we mean by that, but we haven't had a series of detailed conversations. So, I mean, I think it could be a really good opportunity for us to take some time over, over the holidays, review that plan more, and maybe in our January workshop, do a little bit of a deeper, kind of go through it and actually talk, even though, like you said, it's a good tool, Frank. I mean, for 2013, there's likely a couple of things we at least want to, you know, update or something from there. So, yeah. And then the reason we started having this conversation and asked you to come in is that we, we realized that, you know, we're not having ongoing good dialogue. It's no one's fault. We're just, you know, operating as two separate groups, the board and the EDA, and then the Planning Commission, honestly, separate too. We don't have a really good mechanism for providing feedback amongst them. So we haven't solved it, but we certainly realize and are trying to make some efforts to move forward on that.
Okay. Yes, and I don't know whether you, you have this or not, but two ways that typically are used to improve that communications, you know, amongst the boards in there is to have some, either a member of the board or a liaison from the board serve on the, the EDA. And, and that's one way. And I know in your case, the, the staff, your county administrator and the county staff, you know, serves as the staff to the EDA, and that is another excellent way to facilitate that communications. But it's important to keep those lines of communication, communication open because, as I said earlier, the, the main purpose for the EDA is to help you achieve your, your goals.
Let me answer a question about that. So we do have two members of the board, it's myself and Roger, who are assigned to the EDA. But we have, you said as members of the EDA, we've been attending their meeting as more of a liaison, but not counted officially as members of the EDA. Did you suggest an actual membership, or did you just mean going to the meetings?
You know, typically, it's, it's a liaison, but in, in, in practice, oftentimes, the, the members of the board participate at, just, it's very similar to a, a regular board member, except for, you know, they don't have voting privileges. But here, I'll just give you the, the example here in Portsmouth, the member of City Council, usually the vice mayor, has served on, as the liaison of the council, I mean, to the EDA, and she participates fully, just as any other member. When we have closed meetings, she, you know, is a, a member of the closed meetings, and here's, you know, all of the confidential information that we hear. But the only difference is that she, she doesn't vote when it comes to the, the open meeting.
Okay, that's, that's, that is consistent. Good. I just wanted to make sure we meant the same thing by that term. Any other questions or comments? All right, I think we're good. Thank you, Mr. Barber. We appreciate that. And if we have some more need for advice, we'll be sure to reach out to you. Thank you for your help.
Just to have Taylor give me a call, I'll be glad to assist whatever, however I can.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a great evening.
That's a great example where the WebEx works nice. You hate someone to drive along ways for 15 minutes. All right, next on our agenda is discussion or report on tax collection. We, when we've set into this year's budget cycle, we were just in the throes of COVID, and we were very cautious, we believe, and reduced our expectations for revenue and reduced our spending significantly, and said we would revisit things in December because that's when we have majority of our local taxes due. So we're glad to have our treasurer with us tonight to talk about that. Thank you, Ms. Coleman.
Okay, so I went ahead and got the collection comparison for the past four years, including 2020, which is the current. So you have the past three years. Obviously, we're up 1% for real estate. We're up 3% for, for property. Public service, looks like it's having a little bit of issues, but that could be because of postmarks. The due date was pushed to December 7th because the 5th fell on Saturday. So we honor postmark dates, so it's very possible that we have quite a bit of that, still trying to come through the mail. We noticed about two years ago that the mail was not as sufficient as it had been in the past, where you could get a bill or a payment the next day versus now it takes three or four days. Yeah. So basically, if you got any questions, I'll be happy to answer. I mean, I'm very pleased, given the circumstances we've been through this whole entire year. Haven't had a lot of complaints, worked with a lot of customers and helping them out with getting their payments done. Lot of people didn't get to go on vacation, go out to dinner every Friday night, or even to the movies. So that could be why we're significantly ahead, in my opinion.
Yeah, and while not part of the core taxes, I don't know if you heard at last month's meeting, we did commend you and your office on the auction that you conducted for the delinquent taxes, and we do appreciate the efforts you and your office are making to-
Yes, thank you.
Yes, I did, I took your figures and just compiled, compiled the three types of taxes there, and I agree, I'm, was very pleased. So it looked like, like the last four years, it's 84% collected in 2017, by now, 85% in 2018, 83% in 2019, 85 as a total now. So very consistent. The only thing I was wondering, and I realize this will be speculation, I realize that, is if we think the possibility of those who haven't yet paid may be in worse shape than historically, you know, like that those could, could pay, went ahead and paid, but then maybe those who can't are possibly in, you know, really bad shape. Have you heard, just anecdotally from taxpayers or your associations in other counties, do you hear any, any worries further about that?
No, you always have quite a few that are repeats. Most citizens kind of sort of in that situation, wait until they can file their taxes and get their tax refund. Obviously, tax refunds were also put back. I'm hearing some customers are just now receiving when they filed in February. And that's because the state's in everybody home too, and they're not having people work, mail in tax returns. They're not, you know, they got, they've got that lapse where they've got to go and actually pick up the mail. They've got to get it back. They've got to try to process it, and they're doing it at home, just, I feel.
Yeah.
Most of the state's been doing. I mean, generally, we try to help every taxpayer that has an issue. They call us. They're like, oh my gosh, applause for job, this. We have a lot called. We referred them to the CARES Act money. Most of them took advantage of that.
Good.
That could be one thing that kind of helped out, some of them. Some of them didn't realize they were actually delinquent because they never got a bill in the first place, and I can, I can't, I can't vouch for what happens once things leave, you know, those doors. So I was very impressed that we had not, I was expecting more complaints of losing jobs and not having income and not being able to do it, but honestly, it was very minimal, minimal compared.
I think that's what I'm having a hard time reconciling. It's the same thing too. You know, we all hear the news. We, we know, it has been a challenging year regardless of whether you've lost a job or not. It's a challenging year. And then to see, we're pretty much right on track. It's, it's the perception versus looking at the reality, but we've just been kind of, I think from the news, just hammered so much that, that things are really bad for many people. And obviously, some people are significantly impacted. I don't want to downplay that, but it's pretty good overall. Anything else?
Thanks for the information, Nicky.
Yes.
You're welcome.
If you don't mind saying for the next topic, because they're kind of interrelated and then, okay, all right. Because we'll, so we'll move to the next topic, but it's all, yeah, it is all very interrelated here. So the next topic, we'll turn to Ms. Cave. It's around the budget and the CIP. So we wanted to understand our income from there, and then we'll look a little more broadly at revenue and how we're, we're shaping up on the budget before we move into the CIP.
All right. I am going to minimize the risk. All right, so one thing to remember is Stephanie is comparing collections to what was actually billed. Now we're switching over to looking at collections compared to what we had budgeted to recent. So two different, I'm just going to share your screen. Oh, thanks. But it's all good news because we are still ahead of where we were last year at this time. So we are doing good.
Need to start a relief.
Yeah, that's actually for sure.
All right. So when we wanted to look at our COVID-19 reductions in revenue, at first, it took me a second to figure out what is the best way to come to this. So I looked at what we've collected to this point. I compared it to our original budget, and then I compared it to the budget that we've now adopted. And if there's a difference in the percentage we've collected, that's, say, we, we predicted a 5% real estate decrease. Well, there's a difference in collections of what we had predicted versus what our actual adopted budget was. So we were right on target. We did great to decrease that by exactly 5%. That doesn't mean our collections are down 5% from where they were last year. I mean, our budget is just more accurate.
Yeah.
Personal property tax was the same way. There's a couple things here that I want to talk about. Local sales tax honestly didn't affect us as much as a lot of, like Northern Virginia, even Chesterfield and Reiko, where that sales tax from stores being closed is going to drop their revenue. We don't have that as much. Business license fees, these and parks and rec fees, I kind of want to touch on. They're due in May, so I had, when looking at the monthly revenue summaries and expense summaries, the last, I think it was in October, I noticed that our business license fees were really high, like we were doing really well with those collections. So I asked Laura, is this accurate? Like, I want to make sure this is, you know, what's the reason we're doing so well? And there were reasons for it. Loggers are getting billed that happened in the past. Correct me if I'm saying something wrong.
That's right.
I think they're catching up on people that had paid two or three years in advance. So a lot of that money is coming in this year. So a lot of that money is coming in this year. So we had predicted, what, a 10% decrease there? We haven't seen it yet, obviously, but in May, I guess we'll see the true impact of how our local businesses did. I will say, and the CARES committee knows, we had way more business applications than I ever imagined that we would. So we ended up spending 570, I think that was the allocation, $570,000 on businesses. So there are people struggling. We'll see how it all pans out in May. It's too early to tell. Parks and rec fees, we projected a 25% decrease. We're only about 12 right now. That's because, you guys, Glenn is doing awesome. He is like the only county in the area that's opening up sports to other counties. So I can talk, like, just from a basketball perspective, my son's nine, he plays basketball, and the whole gym is filled with Chesterfield County kids. So, I mean, there's like seven from Amelia and the rest from Chesterfield. So he has been, and I think he did the same with football. So he's been able to keep his fees way higher than we would have predicted had everything been shut down.
And of course, these aren't, these are relative amounts too, like the, the bar chart, of course, looks high. We reduced P and R fees by 25%, but it's a very small portion of our revenue compared to other things anyway.
Right. Yep. And stated, we really haven't seen as much of a projection as we thought. So that's good news.
Yeah. In all cases, let me just, in all cases, better than we projected.
Yes, in all cases, much better. And that, I mean, parks and rec could have been this bad, but because we chose to go on with sports, that worked out well. All right. So that was COVID only. Now let's look at, I think y'all wanted to get a picture of how is our fund balance? Do we have money to spend on CIP? So we just got our audit done. Our auditor's speaking next week on the audit report. But at June 30, here was our fund balance. If you want to come to where our current fund balance is, all you need to do is add what we've collected, subtract what we've expended. I took out of these figures, everything related to CARES, because that's all going to be a wash. And we are now at 12 million, which seems really high. But if you look up here, we always talk about, David, I don't know if you've heard this yet, and maybe not even you, but you too, but there's a goal in the, in the GFOA accounting world that each locality keep 15 to 25% of their general fund as unassigned. Or, yeah.
On a rainy day.
Right. Like, you want to just have that as an emergency fund. So at June 30, we were at 49%. So we're well above, like, the minimum recommendation. There's no maximum, but they do recommend 25%. We increased our fund balance 810,000 over the year.
That directly affects our credit rating as well, right?
Yeah, they do look at that.
Based on that percentage, okay.
Yeah, they want to make sure we have fund balance to pay our debt. So they look at this and that. So I did this calculation as of November 30th, and we were at 56%, which is really high. That's because we just got all of our tax money in. A good question people always ask, though, I'm sure y'all know, we only bill for taxes once a year. So right now, we're probably at our highest cash flow point of any, any time of the year. Actually, it might get a little higher than this today, probably. But, but about November 30th, mid-October is when, I know Pam used to always call me Stephanie and stayed calm so far, but called me and said, we're really low on cash. I need to move something, you know? So we're, we're usually the lowest at any point of the year, around then. And we were only at 38%. So we're doing pretty good. I made a note up here that in FY '20, we increased our fund balance to 809,000. But if y'all remember, we did promise the schools their carryover, which ended up being 1,052,000. So our effective decrease, you know, once that carryover, carryover is given to them, we'll just have a decrease in fund balance, 243,000. Our original budget predicted 205,000. So that was pretty accurate. So we're in a good place. Here's the same.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
15 to 25% recommended by the accounting organization, is that a range? Or is that 25 is recommended and not to ever go below 15 during your low cash flow part of the year? Or is that just a good working range to be in?
That's a good working range for the minimum that you want to establish. Yeah. I mean, obviously, local governments aren't here to make a profit. So you don't want to see it build every month, every year. But you can easily keep it above 25% if that's what you choose.
Theoretically, even if we had filled all of our CIPs for this year already, we'd just still been above, way above that.
Yeah, that's true. Yep.
But not knowing what our income was going to be.
Right.
Okay.
So here's the same look at the CIP fund. We had an increase in FY '20 of $3.5 million. So, I mean, we've got $7.7 million sitting in CIP to spend. I wanted to make a note, because I'm not sure that everyone is aware that part of, so we have our main CIP fund, which is Fund 304 that y'all see that we write checks out of. But we also have set up, and I think this was a recommendation from Jim Bennett, like maybe 10 years ago, set up a $5 decal road fee. So every time somebody pays a license tax, like you saw on your bill, $25, $5 of that goes into this fund. The treasurer's office moves it with every payment. And that's put aside, and this was just what the board wanted to do at the time, that was put aside to go towards the paving of roads. So that's all included with, you know, there's Fund 304, which is the landfill fees, but on the audit, it also combines this with it because that's technically a CIP project, paving of roads.
What roads would we be paying for if they're all state roads?
That can go towards our, I'm guessing that can go towards our 50% match with VDOT grants.
Okay. That's what we want. It's a medicine match, once it's higher than our share.
Like with our, the sidewalk project coming up, something like that.
It can go without that. In the past, it's been used towards revenue share.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's why I wanted to point that out, that it's there, it's sitting there. And in the past, it's kind of like the landfill fees. In the past, we've held it here specifically for CIP. Well, we've held this year, you know, for a $5 for paving of roads.
Close to that level. 10 years?
Um, no, I'm sure it's grown over the years because.
Sounds like we're not really spending.
You never tell.
You mentioned one, right?
We have the check very often. But it goes up there. I can't give you the dollar amount. One year. 10 years, that's quite a chunk of change.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. And last slide, I promise. All right. So we want to know, do we have money to spend? I think we all know, we do, looking at those percentages that we're at. But we predicted, if we think back to when we adopted the FY '21 budget, we predicted a 1.1 million, that's between the general fund and the CIP fund, that we're going to lose out on 1.1 million dollars. I think it is technically still too early to tell, but I think we're going to be in okay shape, much better shape than a lot of counties and cities, especially Northern Virginia and Hampton Roads area. We're, we haven't been impacted as much. We are above average on most of our non-tax and CARES revenue by 11%. And that's because landfill fees are coming in higher than we thought. We had a huge delinquent sale that brought in almost 200,000, I think.
Well, yeah, almost 200,000 just for taxes, but the rest, it could be two years before we see it. There's lanes attached to some, other areas that pop up that were missed during the process that get to clean their share as well. So we'll know better figure in two years.
Yeah, we've got a lot. That, that was a one-time deal. We are below what we predicted to be at this point in spending, but I would point out that I think we have about a little under 500,000 set aside for the fire department to purchase the truck. That's not purchased yet. So once that happens, that, you know, pulls it way down. Same thing with economic developer position. That's a, a large portion in there that hasn't been filled. So, you know, there are reasons that we're below on the spending.
Which grant is that? Is that the sidewalk one, the Vito?
The Vito grant, I want to say it is a 911, 911 communication center. Yeah.
Okay.
They get one every year, and it's always for a different project, and I can't remember.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
But it's like 283,000. And I've asked the sheriff's office where they're at on that, and they said it might need to roll over into.
That's the key. It's the sheriff's.
Sheriff's office.
Thank you.
Do we pay cash for the truck or do we finance it?
We pay cash. We, we have paid.
Money's pretty much free now. We still pay cash.
We have in the past.
I think we get a little bit of a discount if we pay for it all in front.
Yeah.
Save a little money.
So, I mean, another reason we can't be positive of how we're going to end up is because the school has all kinds of things happening because of COVID. Their ADM is way down. I also feel like they might get another round, and we might get another round, we don't know yet, of funding. There's no way to predict where they're going to be, but they make up 31% of our general fund budget. So that's another unpredictable factor. In summary, I think the main question was, do we have money to spend on CIP projects? I would say if our lowest point of the year, we were at 38%, and we want to be above 25%, we can play around with 13%, which would come to 2.665 million. I'm more of a conservative. Like, I don't want to just spend that, but technically, that's what we've got from the numbers, black and white numbers, so.
And the 25% being the most conservative, it's a range of 15 to 25 anyways.
Exactly. Yep.
Okay.
So I hope that answered your question.
I think it's wonderful.
Yep, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Let me get this back up.
Let's figure out what to do with it.
Yes.
My responsibility is also investing funds. We currently have a $2 million CD that's fixing to roll over. Plan was to take any more money and invest it. Be a decision that I'm going to have to make based on what you all think you may want to do.
Of course. That's what we're here to talk about.
So you're here for the Congress, so you're in the right place. Perfect. Okay, so this, the same agenda item, we had budget and CIP. So we'll, we'll jump to the CIP portion and then certainly want Carl and Stephanie to contribute to this. And thank Daryl, and Glenn's not here, but Kent's also been contributing a lot with trying to get our CIP stuff really organized for us. So I think everybody should have, sorry, I sent out a spread, oh, yeah, I didn't print myself a copy, that's the problem. Sent out a copy of what Farla had put together for the CIP update. And then we need to work through some recommendations of what to go forward with. So I'll just run down a couple of them first. So these were the, to be clear, these are the already approved CIP items from the prior budget cycle. So the Wellhead Protection Study, which is on our agenda for discussion next week at the board meeting. But the estimate for that has gone from 170,000 to 195,000. So unless we want to not proceed with that, we're looking at probably 195,000. We've got several items on here that are completed, which won't run through all of them. But the total that Carla said is, of those projects, they were completed overall under budget. So we've got an extra almost $94,000 that wasn't used for the completed projects. We've got broadband project that David confirmed, looks like it's at the correct estimate for our portion of that. And then several items that are being researched more still, either between Glenn, Daryl, or Kent. So the high school generator project at 114,000-ish. We've heard the, the details on the work being done around the, the radio system upgrades that were 407.5,000. And that goes along with the sheriff's request that had been approved for 40,000 for communications on the radio station. Those projects, they're running to either some hurdles or redesign, like we talked about with the, the radio one. So my recommendation on those was, let's leave, and we don't know enough now of exactly what to do. But ask people to come back in February for those, kind of, once they've had time to work through the projects, and then give us an update for those. The one that's on here that looks like we don't need to move forward with is the Joe Pollack Field upgrade and sprinklers. We heard some conversation on that one a couple of meetings back regarding the difficulties of doing it while sports are going on, and hindsight wishing we'd done it during COVID, but nobody knew. So both Glenn and Daryl have suggested that we remove this item and let Parks and Rec go back and kind of rework a plan around that. So the recommendation is remove the, the right now appropriation for 133,000. And so if you, if we were to do that, then you take the 133,000 that we're pulling back, plus the excess 94,000 from projects done under budget, then we've got a good bit to, to consider using there that has zero impact on the budget because it's already all been allocated. And the last thing, and I'll shut up for a second, is there's two, I meant two projects that are going to be higher than estimate. One already mentioned, the Wellhead. The other one was, we got information on, everyone should have gotten an email from Glenn, or maybe it was Carl that attached it, but from, from information from Glenn and Daryl about the lights for the field, that if they go with the LED options, it's going to push the, which there were a lot of reasons, it's documented for us, but why that's better, that would increase the budgeted amount from 48,000 to 85,800. So it's, you were saying, like, it's kind of, let's look at the CIP, but I think it's, let's take the first, like, what's already been approved, what are we going to do in the, and then be able to move forward. So I think it's just open for conversation. So I think it's just conversation.
If you want to stay on that one for a second, the sprinklers, I think Glenn had requested the lights on the field as well as the purchase of an ATV, which I think, yes, even with the bigger price, math, math, that'll still come below the 133,000 that was already allocated.
Yeah, this is, as we get to new projects, it's just kind of going to be next on our agenda. This is Glenn's list of all of his upcoming requests. So most all of these are already in the CIP. He just kind of reprioritized them because two months ago, you know, we heard they're looking differently. And yeah, you're right. The very top request after the one that's already in progress of the lights is the ATV.
Okay.
And then two more light and projects and kind of, yeah, moving down. Let me ask, so we can kind of get, figure out what amount of money to work with. Does everyone support the adjustment of the, the budgeted amounts for the two that seem like they're going up? The Wellhead project and the lights moving into the LED option. Okay. Sorry. Okay. All right. So I'm asking that because then I have an updated number to play, to work with. So we factored in the kind of money removed for the other ones and extra, and then subtracting money to go with those two updates. Then without anything touching current budget or anything Carla projected, it's 164,000, rounding, 164,000 dollars left over. Yeah. And then Carla, you know, by Carla's projections, she's saying it's safe to spend up to 2.6 million. Obviously, we've got some discussion around that, but, you know, without, without even touching budget stuff, it's 164,000. So maybe at the same time, then pass it around to, sorry, let me pass those around that way to them. So the schools gave, it kind of goes with the list from Glenn. The schools gave us their updated CIP stuff. It's the same ones that are in the CIP plans that David had gathered. They just rank ordered down because things have changed this year with what their, their priority orders would be as well. Let me just check process for a second. So those two that had updated estimates, we've already approved them to move forward in the past. This is just the estimate changed. We don't need to do anything formally then for that, right? I didn't either, just want to check, check, check myself. Okay, yeah. So I think it's just for discussion. So I think it's just for discussion of people or suggestions, you know? If we want to spend more on some of these CIP initiatives, which ones do we want to prioritize?
Does it all come to, you have that number?
Uh, no, I do not.
Did everything that was suggested.
From the original CIP.
Well, no. Let me clarify, this isn't everything. So that's just the two lists from Parks and Rec and schools, which do make up the majority, but on the existing CIP from David's list, we also had, for example, environmental had asked for a pickup truck, although didn't you have to put that into the regular budget? I thought we.
Well, at that point in time, it was being considered a new vehicle, not a replacement.
Okay.
Since then, we've been basically from the parasols. So it will become a replacement this next time around. I've talked to Patty about.
Okay. Okay. So we probably don't need to keep that on this one then. All right. And then I'll just give you an example of some of those. You know, I just brought my copy from a previous meeting. Um, but like the fire department had requested funds for, to start the planning for that, um, training centers that they've discussed. Um, we've got the sidewalk project that, you know, we had the matching or not a full matching, but like a hundred and forty two thousand was our portion of the request for that.
Be sure VDA turned that down. So it's not a viable project, no one's forward.
Oh, did that? I didn't know.
They turned, they dropped their seven hundred and fifty thousand share of that. We did not make the deal. So I'll get back with Todd and we'll shoot for the start again though. Be the third or fourth time. We're going to get Derek back. Our biggest problem is we're into Richmond district stuff. Our numbers are a little bit of minnows, but.
Yeah.
We don't even make the middle class when it comes to these two things.
Thank you. That's helpful. All right. Um, then we had things like the next phase of the fire station paving, uh, phase five at two hundred and twenty six thousand was the estimate. And then Daryl on a couple, it's broken up over a couple of years. There's wastewater treatment plan upgrades. Like the first year request was three hundred and seven thousand. Then the next year was a hundred and fifty thousand. Which is maybe just two, yeah. Just two. We've got the handle building in there, potential for animal shelter. So there's a bunch of other, I mean, that's why I didn't add it up to your question. It's like, it depends on how you sit in it, like so many different scenarios.
Handle was included.
Well.
We talked about.
In.
All those feasibility studies were.
The feasibility studies are, but the, um, in the existing CIP requests, there are like phase two, another hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Phase three, four hundred thousand dollars.
Too early to talk about those.
Yeah, I just tell you what's in the list. Yeah, but I agree with you. And there's even a phase four out to another six hundred and eighty five thousand.
If we, if we take all these lists and add them up, plus the stuff you just mentioned, I think we're still under two million dollars. Just ballpark. I have enough numbers in my head. Have you added it up or do you know?
Didn't we do something with, um, didn't we do something with against on the radio project? Possibly pursuing another, another route. That was like four hundred and eight thousand that was in there.
I think we're just planning on keep letting that money roll. Is that, so you figured?
Yeah, I mean.
Basically not taking that out.
Okay.
But, but not spending it.
We use a little bit of it. Or.
We'll need it from.
Where the stud, yeah, we're going to study for.
Right.
Oh, it's like forty, what's it forty thousand, something like that.
I bet you the school is about a million.
Well, I think so the press week at our meeting.
Okay. So the problem, the problem of that, answering that question is like the animal shelters in there for two million dollars also. So like all these things that we just gave, we just approved for feasibility studies. Well, it depends on what they come back as.
Right. Yeah.
So the parks and rec, I mean, we talked to, you know, that could be several million dollars for land and a facility. We don't know that hamner expansion will be probably a million, you know, like I think all those are variables we just, they're like placeholders in here and you don't know.
Anything beyond the next year, those are just places. And a lot of them have been around for, well, the handle building project that schools buy.
Yeah.
Those have been out there for years as, as, as placeholders.
Yeah.
Because the CIP is used for other things too.
Right.
It's the base documents, calculating profit.
Yeah. So I was, I was just talking about this school list. The list from Glenn for the next year, not, not the following years, but just the next year.
Right.
And all the things that you mentioned on here that would be known within the next year were well under two million.
All right. So the schools top four are eight hundred and eighty five thousand. The reason I said top four is her one on five.
Yeah, it brings it over a million.
Well, and she's also said it depends on what they do. So we recommend a study at thirty, let me add in the thirty thousand dollar study. All right. So then it's nine hundred and fifteen thousand. Right. Yeah. Nine fifteen. And then what did you say, Glenn's, how far down were you talking?
Glenn was like, uh.
Like this.
It's roughly a hundred.
I just said, how far were you going down?
Just.
Through the first, that first year.
So one oh five, one fifty, what he's got marked.
Yep.
It's roughly a hundred. One oh five?
Yeah, that's why he's got marked on the side anyway.
Yep. Oh yeah, I didn't even see that. One oh five, one fifty right there.
Oh, yeah. You're right.
So that's a million one.
Mm hmm.
And then the other stuff you were talking about on here? That would be able to be completed without. Not the stuff that we're looking at with feasibility studies, because that probably won't happen.
All right. Let me just reckon. Okay. So well, the fire, the fire department was asking for that, um, study for the training center.
Yep. So let's have that in.
Um.
The library.
The library is already in.
Yeah, I, I have a scribbled version. So I think the next one down is like starting at six. It's the ones the school have already had. So we counted those six through 10. So then it's fire station pavement and wastewater treatment upgrade.
Yes. That's it all there.
If we add those in. A hundred and fifty, one point five seven. Yeah. One million five hundred and seventy five thousand. David or Daryl or Kent, any of those sounds like ones you wouldn't want to proceed with, or you have any major extra bits of information or anything? Just, just checking.
You're talking about one more, or maybe those wastewater upgrade for the UVs?
Uh huh.
And the fire station pavement?
Phase five. Uh huh.
Okay, those, yeah, they're good. We can go with them.
I saw the phase four came in like way, way less than, oh, maybe that's just because it's this year's expenditure. Sorry, that might take that back. It wasn't, that was a number for the total. That was just fiscal year this year. I'm, I understand my mistake.
So, and this is getting back the CIP from last year, if you get me right. And then next one.
Well, ninety four thousand of it would be already expended, already budgeted, uh, appropriated. Fine, Carla. And then the other would be pulling from her, that's two point.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because, yeah.
Okay.
So, yes.
Yeah. So it's, you know, if, if, this is the way I was thinking about it. I agree with Carla about being conservative. I think we all do. That's why we did what we did earlier this year. She was being conservative too and saying stay at least the twenty five percent unallocated fund balance. That was two point eight million. If we have to, we're talking about using half, less than half of that even. Well, yeah, like right at half of that, take off the night for, then I mean, I feel like that's pretty conservative too.
Yep. I think we ought to go ahead and approve it all and do it all.
I agree.
I just don't want anyone not to have an opportunity to talk. I ain't calling you specifically because you're using good of that.
You're good.
Any other ones maybe that somebody knows about that's not necessarily been submitted, but would be like a really high priority or higher priority than something we're talking about?
Something like the upgraded radios for the sheriff's office that was on the original.
Yeah, um, cheat Raina, sorry. I said they want to hold on that.
Just see what we're gonna.
So I didn't take that any money out for, like when I was giving you those calculations, I didn't take that money out. I just said, we'll still assume it's forty, but she's, they're holding and they're coordinating with Kent. They don't want to go purchase and then find out, you know, re, I don't think they're being, they're being very conservative also to make this better. Okay.
Yeah. So what we're proposing doing is all things that we've already agreed to, we're just.
Right. And probably the ones that would have come in this year's budgeting, we probably would have even more CIP still, because we're still being conservative. We just, we pushed it six months later because we were watching how the, the money flowed.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. So.
You're not left.
Yeah.
Right, right.
So, um, help me process again. We're at a workshop, not a formal, a formal meeting.
So I don't want to.
Do we need, so we've talked, we've talked, we've done workshop. That's good. Do we need to write this up and then formally do it at next week's meeting? Is that the best practice? It's, I'm thinking it probably is too, but.
That would be correct. The only, I mean, and I just put that together. The, the only question I've got is the sheriff's radio with a hundred and a quarter, that was number three for this year. Which, I don't.
Um.
Cause I got a note for every.
Which one are you talking about?
I don't have that on my list.
Yeah, the sheriff, it, it says radio upgrade for the sheriff's offices.
Yeah, it's in this book. Yeah.
Oh, in this book.
Yeah, it was on the CIP. Cause you've covered everything else on there.
Oh, I just used the spreadsheet from the other spreadsheet. So I don't know.
And I've never seen your spreadsheet. So I've got no way to.
It, it was the one that Carla pulled together. I, I, that's fine. I don't know. Can we just, what do we know about that one then?
The only thing I'm saying is this is what was accepted and fish for you. Let me look.
I'm always thinking that forty thousand dollar we approved in the regular budget was a, was a as an extra that they didn't get submitted at the sheriff's office.
I think it was an upgrade to digital and that extra console.
Right. The, the, uh, yeah, the third, third console.
And then they had to upgrade their, their overall system from analog to digital. Cause it was originally a forty thousand dollar project. And it was in here.
But I'm wondering if that's something they need to.
They had forty thousand from the year before. That's.
That's right. That's right.
And the upgrade was a hundred and twenty five to go from analog to digital.
All right. So I think that just confirms we're on the right track for document this. Carry it from a workshop to next week's formal meeting. That gives us time to get an answer and follow up on that one.
But your main number is about one million five seventy five.
Yes.
Thinking between you and David, I can get a complete list. I don't, I don't have it all added to that, but I think you guys.
I think I, I think I wrote down it right. I'll, I'll email it back. I'll email it to everybody because it's still for discuss. I mean, this isn't a vote or decision. Let's just be clear. This is our plan.
Modify this to take out anything that we're not talking about doing and just have a final spreadsheet with everything in it.
Yeah. I love to write sheets by the way. So I mean, that's great. Yeah.
We got the library at thirty five, that made it down from forty two.
Yeah.
The safety training stays at twenty two. Radio, which you don't show there, is what we just talked about. We worked, uh, the pickup trucks gone.
Right.
The sidewalk projects gone.
Yeah.
The elementary school and high school HVAC, two different projects are okay.
Yep.
Football field is okay for the lights. The exterior door at the school is good. Paving at the bus lot, uh, Daryl's too, there's paving project and.
Well.
Water treatment are still there.
Hold on. The paving, so.
The bus station paving is on her list.
Yeah, that's, we have an extra copy of that here. Just take mine for next time. Is that the one? Yeah, it's number three. She's still got the paving for bus shop, school board and middle school at two twenty five.
And they increased the HVAC. Elementary to five fifty.
Two twenty five is what was originally in there.
Yep. Yep.
Well, that's, and it's.
And that's in the number we just added up to.
That is in the one, yeah, that was, we did use that one for that.
Yeah, the one.
What I'm looking at the school has wanted to include five projects in the plan.
Correct.
The favorite policy.
Yeah, yes. Well, she's got it numbered one through five. The difference is that five. We, the five, what we, what we're saying is we'll take her option of the thirty thousand for the study, not the the higher number. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So it gives us something to work for.
Mm hmm.
Yep. That's it.
Any other, um, discussions on that? I've got too much paper now, but. All right. Thanks. I think that was productive.
All right. Do we need to talk to Stephanie, need to talk to us about this investment due while she's here?
Yeah. Do you want, based on what we just said, do you have what you need to consider about the CD or do you want to help something?
And I can, we have several other investment accounts, so I can split it up. Five hundred thousand here, five hundred thousand there. It's still easy to get a whole top. Uh, the problem is, is that most banks now, given the economy issues is they're not going thirteen month or twelve month anymore. They're wanting to go eighteen months with no penalty. So if we do get into a lot and I do have to cash it out early, you know, if you're looking at losing some interest, but I mean, like I said, I've already got one, two million right now that's getting ready to roll over that we did not cash out this past year. We've had to cash out past three years. So we've done very well this past year.
But you would never lose it. That's the key.
Yeah, if you're just.
Yeah, because the.
Losing future interest, but you're going to use the no penalty.
Right. And that, that's the key because the penalty is probably going to be more. So.
Okay.
Right.
And what you gain interest isn't much.
Yeah, probably not much.
It's, it's going to be cut almost in half compared to the one I've got now.
All right. All right. Well, let's move to the next topic then, uh, discussion of assistant county administrator.
Could we bump that to the end?
Sure.
Because we've got.
Oh, yeah.
We've got folks waiting.
Yeah, absolutely. I think.
And we've got Sam here from, uh, who's going to have to drive back to South Hill.
Oh yeah, that's totally.
Maybe if we called him.
Maybe do his.
Bright.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, okay.
Number nine and number.
Yeah. And then seven. Yeah, great. We should have thought about that early on. Thank you.
That's all right. It's given me some time. We're going to have some files.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Yeah. So thank you for coming back from last month's workshop to talk to some more on our water and sewer extension options.
Presentation comes up here.
I'll save them all. Sure.
Just need that one to be the full thing. It's good.
All right. I have two. So are they the same thing?
Uh, no, one's, the, the dates are at the end. So click on that one. Yeah, that's the one.
All right. These are the last.
All right. So the, uh, direction from the, the last meeting, uh, was, we're focusing more on sewer. Uh, and the direction from the last meeting was to, uh, let's just concentrate around the Butler's Road area. And this is, uh, of course highway three sixty, uh, and then this is, uh, Butler's Road right through here. So the first thing we did, um, in the original presentation we provided, we were looking at just the highway three sixty corridor. And so we discussed about a truck line, uh, run along through here, the blue area all the way to, uh, one fifty three. And on that, we were only showing this side as service area because we were focusing on three sixty. So all we did here, same truck line, uh, and what else could it serve? And it, Butler's Road is, runs along a ridge as most roads do. And so this truck line can serve the highway three sixty corridor. And so this trunk line can serve the highway three sixty corridor and a good portion of Butler's Road. Now, on the west side of Butler's Road and the rest of three sixty, coming back to where you had, currently have sewer service at Food Lion. Uh, we looked at, what we think would be best to serve this area in the red here, is grab the sewer to a point in the pump station right there. That pump station right now could pump back to Bolo Road, uh, pump station and go on to your current plant. Uh, now, and, and of course, if, if you want to serve this further, you want to serve down Butler's Road on this side, just the further we run the sewer and the pump station down there. Go to the next page. And, oh, I'm sorry, and notice I, I put some pricing on here for you. Totally, these are total project costs, easements, property acquisition.
Just for the red area or?
Just for the red area right here.
And just for the sewer, it's still.
For the sewer, nothing on the water. And the water, you know, I didn't.
The water was just pretty straightforward.
Exactly, yeah, you, you just figure out where you want to run water to and we can put a cost to that pretty easily. And I do want to touch on water and possible, uh, new well options too, uh, before, uh, I, I finish. So it's not really, let me come back to that. All right, so next page. That's pretty good. One of the other things that, uh, you would ask is looking at the comprehensive plan and the Smacks Creek plant, and we had two possible locations for that. The current location that you have, uh, that you have a permit for is sewer plant A. Right near off of, uh, Tietum's Road. It's a little hard to see, but, uh, that's Tietum's Road, it comes down to here. What that plant can serve by gravity is everything in purple, back up here to the village area and up to three sixty. Now, the second location, B, right there, is just further down Smacks Creek. So it can serve all three of these colors. Now, there's a pretty vast area in here that's, uh, there's not a lot of room for development or anything. So didn't focus anymore on this. Went back to looking at Butler's Road and more three sixty. So, uh, we'll just start with the red area. So of that two point five million dollars, uh, on the previous page, about a million and a quarter of it is the pump station enforcement. So.
Which wouldn't need.
Exactly.
It's all gravity, okay. It's all gravity.
This is, this is all gravity going to a new treatment plant.
Yep.
Is what I'm gonna be discussing, so, um, so about a million and a quarter is just a gravity sewer to that point. And of course, if you're not ready to do all of this, putting, even though you're spending another million and a quarter that you're not gonna be able to reuse, might be the thing to do in the meantime. That's up to y'all to determine, of course. Um, now another three and a half million dollars, big chunk of change, of course, continues that gravity sewer all the way down to the plant B location. It, it is a big area. Um, I don't know how much of it is suitable for development or, or how much, I don't know if, uh, if it's gonna be worth that. That's a pretty big expense. As you can see, for much less expense, you can run this trunk line that can serve Butler's Road and along three sixty that you're really targeting for. So about two and a half million dollars for that trunk line to come up through here. New treatment plant, about point three MGD, which is the same size as what you have now, about four and a half million dollars. Uh, you probably don't recall, but, uh, we gave a price that to put a pump station, force main, to bring it back to here, was about three and a half million dollars, just for that pump station and force main.
So there was discussion before about if we did a new sewer treatment plant, then the existing one would become a pump station. Is that, is, or you're talking, we just have two?
That, 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 I think, I would call that a separate topic.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure it's separate in my head.
Build a new plant here, there's no reason that you have to close that other plant. And quite honestly, uh, I put a whole lot of thought into it. I, I don't, I wouldn't suggest that. You've got, uh, a lot of, uh, capital cost in, in what you have there. It's twenty-five years old, but it's a concrete plant.
You're about to upgrade.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's, um, it's got capacity, three hundred thousand gallons a day, and you're only using a third of it. So let that keep doing what it's doing. I mean, there, there, there are some costs in having to run two plants.
Yeah.
But, um, I don't think it's worth the cost to close that point three plant, plant and build a point six over.
Right, that's where I was going is, I wanted to make, yeah, okay, all right.
So, if we did build that new, new plant, but we didn't put in the three and a half million dollar line, the one point two five, the green line could still go to the Bolo pump station and up to the old system.
Or, yes, or, um, if there was a capacity issue, which you don't have right now, it could come back to here and go to the new plant.
With a pump station.
With a pump station still. Still gonna, you're gonna have to have a pump station, because it's gotta get over these ridges. Yeah, but with the, with the capacity that you have in the current plant, and if you were gonna do this initially and not sure when this was coming, uh, you know, I would probably take it back to Bolo and send it to the current plant.
But that was two point something million to do that, right?
Uh, yeah, I think two and a half million.
Double.
Yes, yeah, all that. So hopefully that will give you some, some ideas. Again, it help you figure out where, where do you want to maybe target development and infrastructure?
Well, I think we've already defined that in our comprehensive plan.
Which is?
And that blue line is not in it.
Right.
So I think that's a no-brainer that we don't do that.
Right, uh, I, I would agree with that.
But the other two, green line and the yellow line are right in our comprehensive plan, that I think that's the way we need to move. If we're serious about this and we want to develop three sixty, that's what we need to do.
Yeah, okay, um, sculpting next page. Uh, a schedule.
So either looking at a shorter, two and a half million or the broader, almost state million.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if, if you go back to the, the green line is gonna cost us twice as much to do if we feed it back to the old plant.
Right.
You could take that one point two five million and don't spend it on, the, the second one point two five million and pro, apply it to this yellow line and it's half paid for.
But, no, to, to do, to have sewer service here, you're gonna spend at least two and a half million.
Unless we do this at the same time.
But you have to do.
Two and a half million.
Have to do the three point five to get it, to get it over to there.
Say that again?
So, so, I apologize if this is confusing. The one and a quarter is just the gravity sewer.
Oh, so to pump it up to the yellow.
This grabs.
Pump it up to the yellow line is gonna be another what?
Uh, another million and a quarter, so two and a half total. So you're looking.
It's the same either way.
Two and a half, two and a half, four and a half. What's that, nine point five?
Yep.
But I think there's advantage of pulling it to this new plant anyway, because you'd start balancing out the capacity better and leaving the current plant for any growth the other side of this.
Exactly what I was thinking too. You know, it's better time, as things go this way, you start building out. What about the rest of the area that way? I was thinking.
It's two and a half of the green line to get back to the old, but you're saying it's also two and a half if we wanna pump it up.
It's pretty much the same.
It's gonna be two and a half, two and a half and four and a half.
Yes, that's right.
Nine and a half. Nine, nine point five minutes.
That's right. And the other side of three sixty, those would be, you know, the smaller areas, smaller pump stations, which is pump over into the stuff. And really, if you had a development right up near the road, say within maybe four hundred, five hundred feet, um, I'm sure there's a way we could get it to gravity to the other side. And of course, this doesn't, this is just the lines that you see. This doesn't include, you know, fingers going up.
Yeah.
To, to the, uh.
Yeah.
The visual. Um, so, you know, next slide. Put together a little bit of a schedule, sorry. Kind of small, let's see. Okay, so where to go from here? And this is a pretty conservative schedule. It can be tightened up if needed to. And what we've done to this point is some very high level, um, you know, rough, rough looking at, uh, at the, uh, layouts and cost estimates, I think. The next steps are going to something more detailed, developing a preliminary engineering report, then an environmental, uh, review report. So we estimate about four months' time to do that work.
And how much does that cost?
Uh, well, including the plant, the plant that's gonna be, you, you might, might be around a fifty thousand dollar amount of that. A lot of infrastructure work is typically about ten thousand dollar PER, but plants are usually about thirty thousand.
Okay.
Um, about another three months, securing funding, agreement of PER, figure out, you know, figuring the direction that, you know, is really what we want to commit to.
Securing funding from where? Grants or the county?
Grants, loans, you know.
That comes on us. That's our three months.
Yes, yeah, of course, we'll assist along that way.
This is something we could get an EDA grant for, right? Apply for.
What it's made for.
Yep.
Yeah, engineering, about six months. Now, I will tell you, if, uh, if you do want to build a plant, that's probably will be close to twelve, uh, twelve months. Easements and approvals, about another three months, and then construction, eight to eighteen months, uh, depending on if we were just doing the one red area with the pump station, or if we're doing the full plant and, and all the truck lines.
And this is all sequential?
Yes.
Nothing yet done in parallel?
Uh, some of it can, yeah, so i- if you said, I, I wanna get this whole thing done in two years, yeah, we could tighten up a lot of things. It doesn't take four months for us to develop PER. Uh, we can do that quicker. Um, some of the, um, funding, securing funding, you know, that's, that's up to y'all. Uh, but I imagine it's probably gonna take those three months.
We need to plan to be able to do that, though.
We need a PER.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, easements and approvals, some of that can be overlapped in the engineering design, uh, so. If any questions on sewer? Um, but can scroll, scroll back up to the, uh, things about that.
Half million was just the sewer.
Yeah, yeah. Water's number another three of it.
Yeah, I think our original estimate running water down, uh, all the way down three sixty was, uh, three and a half million.
Yeah.
Uh, ad- adoption, uh, might be if you for water, if, I mean, if you wanna go ahead and we do the water line all the way down, uh, terrific. But if you have a prospect come in and say you just need water to a certain area here, um, and you don't want to spend uh, that big chunk of change, get it down there, putting in a well system that's just to serve that area for now with, uh, pneumatic tank or something like that. Uh, it's, you know, not a bad idea, and then we could tie that new well into the system when it, when it comes along. You know, well, system, uh, you can put something in like that for about half a million dollars. That could serve, um, I, I, I'm thinking of, uh, one of our clients, they have about a twenty thousand gallon a day well system that, uh, has three wells on it. They probably have about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of infrastructure invested there. And it's just, it's so remote from the rest of the county and the, and the infrastructure. So, much more, much further than this is really, but, um, that's something that could be done, and then it could be tied into the system instead. Um, it's not, it's not wasted. Any, any other questions?
I wonder if we should, um, I wonder if we should delegate like a couple people, kind of a small, a sub, subcommittee of the board to spend some time working offline with B and B, Daryl and some others, you know, like, take this just even to either the, e- even fur, like, I, to be clear, I think this is, this is really good progress from what the direction we gave you last month, but you know, the further we take it, we don't necessarily wanna have to have giant group discussion and have to wait a month between discussions either.
But in order for them to even begin, we need to make some, we need to make some decisions on which direction we wanna go.
Oh, yeah.
Like, do we wanna just do the green area now and then add on to it later? Which I'm not in favor of, because we've thrown away one and a quarter million dollars that we can, we're gonna have to duplicate again later. Or do we just go for it? I mean, right now, i- if you're gonna do something like this, now's the time to do it. Money's almost free. We have very little debt as a county.
Yeah.
And if we're serious about doing economic development in that three sixty corridor, this is what we have to do. It's not gonna get any better. It's not gonna, money's not gonna get any cheaper. It's only gonna go the other way.
Right.
And you're talking about the blue line?
No, the whole, no, not the blue line, everything but the.
Everything but.
Yeah, we're not gonna develop down there.
Yeah, so maybe that's just, let's just, cause everyone, I, I agree with Roger on eliminate the bl- the blue line, that's not focus area.
I mean, it'd be great to be all gravity.
David, do you feel, you feel good about that?
Not much land back there.
I'll get you all, uh, an updated map that takes that out, puts the pump station back in and the cost for that, so you can.
Okay.
See what you.
And maybe then add in the water piece.
Yeah, I'll put that, and we put that on the, uh, same drawing, and then come back to the cost for that.
So you're, you're saying, if, if we decide that we really wanted to go for the green, yellow and the new, the new, uh, station.
New plant.
Would cost us roughly fifty thousand dollars to get all the planning done that we could go for, go for grants and funding. The PER and, uh.
Yes.
About fifty grand we'd have to commit to and take the time to do all that, get it out for funding, see how much we could get in grants.
Yes, with one exception, uh, your, your permit you have right now is here.
Yeah, we asked you if that was transferable. Did you check into that? Is it, or is it not?
Uh, it's not transferable in the sense that you just write a letter and send it in.
Right.
So we're gonna have to spend some time in with getting that moved to here. Um, I really, I have no idea on the cost on that. I would guess probably ten, ten to fifteen thousand dollars maybe, because we're, I, I think we're gonna have to apply for a new permit. Uh, so, let, let, let me get some hard numbers back on that.
Okay.
And that number is just, just putting in the system? We haven't got into land acquisition team?
Uh, no, th- th- these costs included some amount for easements.
Okay.
Again, a very high level cost, but, uh, that, you know, certain like three dollars a foot, uh, for a twenty foot wide easement. It's a good number, um, you know, we, so.
We went up.
About land acquisition for the plant, for the plant.
You have to buy that.
Uh, assuming reasonable price, I mean, that's, yeah, include that. Mo- most plants you can construct are for around ten dollars a treated gallon, so that would be three million dollars. But then you've got the, the land, you've got design, you've got inspections, um, you've got quite a bit.
That's what I'm hearing, you think like these are very, that's a pretty good estimate for us to work.
Yeah, I, anyone's bring you a number.
Yeah, we don't either. I like where Roger was going of like, what does it take to get us to the point to start looking at funding options?
Yeah.
And that funding includes grants and other things that don't have to come out of our pocket.
Yeah, and what, what I'm hearing is, it would, it'd be less than six figures.
Yes.
To do everything we're talking about in about six months.
Yes.
And we'd know exactly what it's gonna cost and exactly what we could get for funding.
Yes.
If we, if we engage the CRC and, and start going for the EDA funding.
Yes, the only stipulation of that is that these few drags are feet on the permits relocation. But, you know, we, we, we should, you know, that, we should know by then if it's, uh, you know, yes or no. I, I don't think there's gonna be any issues with moving it downstream.
So if you could do what you're talking about, about putting together a map and a more detailed, everything, everything we just talked about right there, and bring it back to us next week, I would propose that we vote on expending that much money. Okay, and, and get this done, and get it done. Know, know if we're gonna be able to do it or not.
I mean, if I'm reading this right, sewer plant A basically isn't feasible for the direction that we wanna go.
No.
Following the comprehensive plan, and it's, that's a dead, that's just a dead end right there.
So expensive to.
Basically, at Butler's Road, right.
It has a capacity, but you have to pump it all the way back.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, I can't say, well, what was the reasoning behind that location originally?
It was development with a pot's property. It was driving that one. That was a huge development.
That would make, yeah, that makes sense.
This is gonna do so much, the increased land value for the people along three sixty, it's gonna, everybody that comes here that wants to put something on three sixty, first question is, do you have water and sewer? It's, it's something we have to do as, as a county if we wanna grow. And it's all gonna be developed. And it's all going to be development that's going to bring tax revenue without further taxing our school system.
Yeah, that's a good point. Does everybody feel good about the plan? Roger, this isn't a vote, this is just asking him to
No, we just need to get him
Just be clear, I know, but I, I can't see David's face very well because of the way your face, face, that's why I keep calling, I can turn around and see their faces and know what they're, what they're feeling, but you're good with that plan?
Are we going to do the water too? We're going to get a plan, you know, for more?
We're asking them to write it up with what that estimate would look like, yeah, but we're not yet paying for more. We're saying, pull that together so that we can decide if we want to pay for the PER, the ER, those kind of thing, and the permits for getting the different location for the plants.
Right.
Potential business in the county is still needing fire protection. So we need
That's why we need that water, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Very good. Well, I'll get something back to you all next week, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, that's, so that's two items that I think are not currently on the agenda for next week, but just keeping track, Taylor, make sure you're hearing the same thing I did, so, okay. Okay, want to do the bright?
Did you confirm that? And see, did you, did you confirm what you just said?
Two thing, we think what we, we're up to two things coming adding to next week's agenda, so it's here in presentation and vote on what to do with that, and then the CIP presentation and vote, okay, yeah, just make sure we're all on the same page, right?
In the room.
That's right, I'm just trying to make sure these folks are back in the room. Okay, Mr. Spark.
I'm still here.
Thank you, we're, we're sorry, we're rearranging though, so, so you can go next, and I have to hold you up further.
And Robin said she was listening.
So this is the topic, uh, that was number seven.
Great.
Great, that was not what, number seven on our agenda. Discuss the security around the bright system, and for anybody in the audience that doesn't already know or listening, there's the, the bright system's our main financial system for the county.
So, Austin is here to speak for bright, Mr. Sparkman is here to speak for the AS400, which is the platform, and Sean is here because it was a, a statement made about having email security as well. And Jeff is our legal eagle on the, um, team tonight.
Great.
To you.
Okay, Robin, do you want to take it off and leave since you're the bright lady?
Well, uh, good evening, and thanks for inviting me to talk to you guys. Um, I'm, I'm here to basically to answer any questions that you might have in regards to our security. Um, I had sent a, uh, comprehensive listing of our, uh, of your users and what their accessibility is right now, uh, to Taylor earlier, I think yesterday. Um, if there's any questions I can answer.
It's in that presentation. Oh, yeah, so we're just confirming, yes, Taylor sent us a presentation that has information about the secure, how the security works, as well as the current user list, yes.
Okay.
It's down in the document, but yeah.
And basically, just to kind of summarize that, because it is quite, kind of a lengthy document, and I don't want to keep you guys here all night long talking about it. Um, to summarize, um, the BAI software, we have, uh, a system control record that has its own password, we have a module password, and then we have a security password on top of that, that, that can be utilized as well. Um, and, uh, the module password would allow them into anything to, uh, in regards to the module that they have access to. Your treasurer has a password, your payroll has a password. Um, and then, of course, uh, and like I said, that's per module. That password can only be changed through the system control, and it has its own password. And then, of course, the, the security master is where you would actually designate who has access to even get to those screens to where they could possibly put in the password.
So who is the, of all those layers? Who's, who's the administrator, I guess, at the top layer of that for Amelia, that then controls all those downward stream?
Um, I don't know that you guys actually have anybody since Faye retired. Um, we have been handling anything that comes through the help desk as far as the different departments when new users need to be added, or new security needs to be granted, that's being keyed in by the different departments into our help desk, and, and we respond to that and, and create as needed. Um, however, as far as you guys having an onsite security officer, as far as I know, no one has stepped up to that position since Faye retired.
I can see pros and cons of that, honestly, but, you know, the fact you have to go back to bright, and then you have to create the, the help desk for, that means there's nice audit tracking of that. Wh- why do we have so many user accounts that are like not individual people, like info and the animal shelter and comments? Those kind of ones?
Um, honestly, I can, I can only attest to the ones that I'm aware of, I'm sorry, some of these, the pre-existed, uh, my affiliation as far as, uh, well, not my affiliation per se, but, uh, Faye would have set up several of the, the profiles, and I wouldn't necessarily know what those profiles pertain to. I do know that a lot of times they will set up inquiry options, like, uh, you may have an inquiry option for, um, back before we had the, the internet access and the online ability to, uh, look at the, the real estate properties. You might have an inquiry option, and they might have had a terminal set up in the lobby where different, uh, people could come in and inquire on real estate properties, stuff like that. So some of those are, may have in- inquiry options like that. Um, I do know on that sheet, we have listed what they had access to um, on the document, as far as what the individual users are, and what module they had access to.
Okay. I also, by the way, all these, I'm not, uh, I didn't mean that you had to, that I expected you to answer all those questions, I realize a little bit over how we, we use it. Um, so it's a combined system used between administrator's office, um, treasurer's office, and commissioner of revenues office. Laurie, you're welcome to come to public works, okay? You're welcome to come up to participate in the conversation, the workshop, so, um, I noticed one use
Well, I'm sorry.
They use it too, okay.
Who?
Social services.
I don't see any of their employee names on here, though, maybe I just don't. Are they, I just don't, maybe it's just not ones I recognize, the name, names. There's two lists, so I'm, I'm probably flipping between them too.
The one that looks like this, and has
Oh, okay, I was on the, I was on the one, one page one, okay, I got you. So on the first list that's in there, I see at least one employee who hasn't worked for the county in six months.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kristen.
Kristen.
Is that an email, is that the email one or the bright?
Okay, good question. I don't know, they're not labeled. They're not labeled.
These are the, these are the bright, these are the
So what are the, so what are these other ones?
That's email.
Yeah, that's the email, the Sean.
So her, her email account's still there.
Oh, okay, it's kind of a
Hopefully, it's been disabled, or
It's very, it's very, and, this is very unclear, okay.
Other email
So these are just email, all right.
Outlook.
Okay.
This is the number of the bright.
Yeah.
Different modules listed and stuff.
Yeah. A million nine.
Who's a million nine?
I don't know. Or admin eight, or AL.
Right.
Since it has never been used, it was set up by Faye. Maybe one was last used in 2008, also set up by Faye.
So nobody's managing the system, is what I get the, if Faye left, then we have a gap, is that what? I'm not making assumptions, I'm asking
She does what we ask her to do. Right? Robin?
Oh, yes, um, we, we will only, if you ask us to delete somebody, we would, we would delete them for you. Uh, but we're not going to go in and just start making changes to your system without somebody there telling us to.
Yeah, but I mean, there's just account after account after account that are not people. BAI, BAI, AW.
Right, right, can you clarify though, um, there are several like treasurer's office employees that I've asked to be deleted. Do you actually delete them, or do you just take their access BAI options away? Because I see several of them saying no.
Uh, if you have, if you put in a help desk and ask us to delete it, we've removed the security from the security options, and we would, if you've asked for the profile to be deleted and not just disabled, we'll actually, uh, delete it and change the, any objects that they own to someone that's still in the office.
Um, this is Sean. I would agree that no one took over where Faye left off.
You know, that sounds right.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I don't know, I mean, it's life.
But before Faye left, she actually had told me that Janet was going to take over her, like, setting up new people for her. Um, and I do see on this list that J4 has an HR access. HR is human resources, and it says that personnel security no longer is used and was replaced with HR. So my question would be, if you have HR to set up people in any system, can you access any of it?
Um, the HR access actually would only allow you to set up, uh, like an employee into the payroll system, per se. It does not actually give you authorization to set them up as far as in the AS400, and, and Jim may be able to speak more to this than I can, uh, in regards to setting up a profile for them to be able to log into the system versus, um, or our security. HR would not have that authority, that would be, that would be something completely separate.
Yeah, this is Jim. I'm, I'm not really sure about what's being asked on that. There's, there's user profiles, the system, I guess the first gatehouse is access into the system, and that's what I usually deal with. So, um, after, after that's there, then, then bright takes over as far as the access to the applications. And I normally don't mess with the user profiles unless somebody tells me to do something with it.
It's a lot of information here, so.
It is.
It's a lot, um. I mean, is it? Is it practical to have one person be the administrator like Faye was when you consider that it's what we call go through four, five different departments using it, some of which are separate constitutional officers?
I, I can speak to a little bit of that. When Faye first took it over, there was a lot of hands-on. You have to go to the telephone, you call somebody, they tell you what to do. Yeah, I, I can't speak to the bright program because I have no, uh, no
You're talking about more than AS400 then?
But yeah, but the AS400, Mr. Sparkman, who manages that, has a login where he can, he can move, he can dial in and manipulate the screen and do everything that, the only thing that he would ever need, need to is to physically take the tape and put the one in for the day. But that's the only thing that he can't do from where he is. So that's, that is a big change from the time Faye started until she left.
I think I probably didn't ask my question right. When I say practical, I meant, so I get you, you, you answered appropriately on like capability. I guess I was asking more about practical life. It's, more does it make sense, maybe I should say it that way, to have one person administering, you know, in control, administering the whole thing when it serves so many different purposes? Or does it need, need to be something more like a, a process for administering it that says, you know, to get a new user on, we need approval from a couple different people, or we need, one, I'm making it up, but like, or once a month, we need these four people to review the access list to make sure they feel like, you know, nothing got changed inadvertently, or something like that. I don't know, I don't
Well, one thing that I've seen, I, you know, I, I, I work with a lot of localities, and, uh, typically that you've got a system administrator that works with the system itself, and then you have the security officer that works, the bright security officer that works with setting up somebody within, you know, within the applications. But a lot of times, just based on, on, on manpower, that person can be one and the same, and that is not unusual.
And is that usually, is it usually an IT person?
Uh, you know, it's, it's funny, I mean, you, you, you see a lot of, it's, every locality is different, I mean, uh, I'd say like, for instance, I'm in King George, and, uh, King George, they have a whole IT staff. They just deal with IT and the actual physical, you know, the physicalness of the systems. They don't deal with the software, and that's somebody else. But then again, I've been to some localities that that's one and the same, like for instance, Faye, she, she did basically all of it as far as I know. Um, but it, it, it's, you know, it's, it's, you know, Virginia's unique, and that just about every locality is different. Um, and, you know, depending on the staffs, how big the county is, you know, what they do, I've got some counties that that don't have an IT staff at all, and they just call me when something goes wrong. And, you know, system-wise, and then I, you know, I get in and I try to fix it. But, uh, and they usually rely on bright, I, I believe, to do the, uh, setting up of the, the users if there's a new one that comes in or one that needs to be changed.
What else runs on AS400 besides bright?
Uh, I believe that's it.
And the whole email system is Office 365 in the cloud?
Yes.
And did I hear right that you're still using tape backups?
The AS400 backs up every day on a tape, and it goes in a spire-proof safe, yes.
Why are we not doing that in the cloud?
The AS400 is, is somewhat unique in that it's more like a mainframe than it is like an Intel platform, okay? It's, it, there are some ways to do it, for instance.
We've based them out of work for 20 years.
Blackstone is, is looking at something like that, uh, there are applications that can back it up. I think I'm getting some feedback here, um, but there's some applications that you can run that will actually back it up to a server, and then that server can be backed up to the cloud.
Yeah.
It still doesn't negate, it just still doesn't negate using tape.
Can bright only run on AS400?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, I realize you're from bright, and I don't want this to be offensive to you, but like, when I see these screen, when I see these screen prints, so I could do a decent amount of tech for a Fortune 200 company. AS400s were phased out of many large companies literally 20 years ago. It's really unusual to find companies of any size still using them.
Uh, I, I don't think that's correct. Uh, most of the Fortune 500 companies in this country use those systems. They're on the back end, they may not be on the front, but they're on the back end. And I believe it still has at least 12 more years on that system.
All right.
People are buying them.
We'll agree to disagree, but then the bright system itself, I mean, it's green screens, there's no GUI at all, like, this is really old looking as well.
You can use GUI with it.
Yeah, we use GUI.
You do. So all these screens you got were just, they're not what you're used to looking at?
Yeah. Not the past, actually.
It's kind of what they're used to.
See, I'm, I'm an older guy in the office and I prefer the AS400. Previous employer, which is Navo, which is a Fortune 500 company, which is AS400. And believe it or not, the company before that that I spent 30 years with, the Air Force is still using the AS400 behind everything else they have. These systems were a no problem.
Yeah.
And it's extremely expensive to roll all this stuff over.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I know.
But the GUI interface exists and is available.
Okay. Well, that, that answered my question with there's a GUI interface too, just not seeing it in the documents and we're not users of the system. So.
Right across the office, it uses. Hers is all modern and easy.
Oh, nice.
So I just love that stuff.
You said it, not me, but.
Loves it. The rest of us are you and you for the GUI.
I'm an old fart too and I'm with Holly.
Well, then I like that it's option. I mean, that sounds, that sounds good. All right. So do we have process, do we have documented processes in the county for how the cap, the security is going to be administered? Like, who can put in a, who can put in a ticket to request a new user? Who has to sign off? Who can grant access to one module or another? Do we have anything like that documented?
I do my own.
You do for your department?
If I have a help desk company I gotta put in, sometimes I need to use it right then. I, I can't wait three days for somebody to say, I don't understand what you're talking about. I don't know what you want. What is the system not doing?
Oh, that would be fine. I just meant it as a document. I just mean as a document.
You only have access to certain modules, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, of course. I have miscellaneous, the Trevor, the GL. And I have, um, Trevor miscellaneous GL and Journal entry.
Oh, okay.
UT, actually I have UT as well.
All right.
One function under UT.
But does your procedure document for that or to say like, for example, only Stephanie can approve creating a new user and granting their access or technically anybody in your office?
No, I sent an email to Bright through the help desk and say, I've got a new employee. Can you please create a user and to mirror?
Yeah. But I'm asking, do you have a documented process for that too? Not what do you do? Is it written down? Like, can we say, show us your process for security of Bright?
No.
And I actually.
I'm not surprised. I mean, that's, that's not, that's just quite.
Yeah, I think that that process might be documented with Bright because when we first started talking about this in October of 2018, Janine is the woman that Stephanie and I have worked with. And I asked her to send me a list of who had access to both of our systems. And she said, I'll need her permission from the treasurer to do that. But I can do yours.
Yeah. That's exactly what it's coming to. Yeah.
So Bright's using some protocol.
Mm hmm.
But where'd you get it from? And is it still accurate and correct?
Yeah, yeah. Does that sound right to you too? That that's what y'all would be, y'all have some kind of protocol?
If there's not a designated security officer out of locality, we, we rely on the commissioner, the treasurer and the finance director to be those points of contact as far as security for their modules.
So you say the finance director. So if somebody who worked for Carla sent you a help desk request and asked you to set up a new user, would you do it?
No. Yeah.
Okay.
And Carla, sorry to pick on Carla. Carla can't request to add to grant access that would get into Laura or Stephanie's space?
No.
See, for me, the only one I use is part of Laura's. I have to go through Laura to get that sign on. That's where we have to go to get Holly hooked into it. I had to go through Laura's office to do that.
That makes sense because it's not necessarily about the office. It's where the data is for the mod.
I actually did not sign off to give Holly access. And I did not sign off for Athena to be set up last year, December. I didn't even ask for Athena to be set up. She was set up automatically.
So would it be helpful, would it be helpful for each of those major departments then to document their processes and then to document a process kind of holistically above that? So that we can, so that everybody that's hasn't, has invested interest in this can look through and agree like, this works for us. And as far as process, I know I said I was just brainstorming and I go, but I think there should be something like every quarter or every, whatever frequency y'all pick, the group looks, you know, all the leaders look through and agree like this is the right access. These, you know, these people have been deleted appropriately. Why did this person get added or something?
And that's.
Is that reasonable?
That's reasonable for, for that portion. Um, and that takes care of who can sign on. But right now, the security level that we have, so I can't sign into payroll, but I can run a payroll. I can't sign into social services, but I can look at all their, who they've paid, anything else. Because if you go into queries, there's no protection. So any query anybody has made, put up all of those users, you put in all, you can run anything you want to.
But Bright has a way to control that, right, Robin?
Uh, actually query is an IBM thing. So I'm going to have to actually defer to, to Jim on that.
Okay.
It would also be correct for like the Works School file or the Workout queue. Yes.
And that's determined, that's determined by the system. Yeah.
So is it possible in the AS400 to set permissions down to the query level?
Uh, yeah, we can actually set, you know, I mean, you could set who can use the query command and run it. But that doesn't prevent them from doing what, you know, from looking at certain files. Uh, so while I can prevent the use of query, I can't prevent the way it's used.
So you can't prevent, you can't control, once you give somebody query access, they can run any query in the system?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Unless we take it a step further and do object authority. And we can actually, we can, we can set up object authority. However, when we do object authority, that typically does require someone in your locality to be there to, uh, administer object authority. And but object authority would lock it down. Yes.
What, what might be beneficial, um, is I don't normally do this on regular systems unless I'm asked, but, uh, what I could do is, uh, do a security analysis on the system. And that way bring up, you know, what, what we need to do or what has to happen. I mean, that's up to y'all. That way you get a better picture of what's going on.
What's involved in a security analysis?
I just go through it and I've got my checks and things. I check all the various, uh, you know, the system values. I check the users for authorities and, and that kind of thing. So I, I go through it. I go through it pretty good.
But it doesn't prevent somebody.
No, but that tells you.
Somebody did something.
Well, that's part of that security. I mean, one of the things it also looks at is auditing. You can audit with that system. I don't believe that system is using auditing. That's not something that's normally turned on. But, uh, you know, we can get auditing turned on. That way you would know who's doing what.
Would it slow the system down if you turn on auditing?
Uh, it slows it down just a bit, but I don't think it's enough. I mean, the, the Bright applications are very low intense as far as, uh, you know, dealing with processor and memory and storage and stuff. It, it would not be an appreciable, I, I don't even think you'd notice it.
Does it cost more?
No, no. Doesn't cost anything. Just a matter of turning it on.
We've, we've got all the leaders of the group in here. I mean, does that, of the groups that use it, does that sound like something would benefit y'all turning that on as a starting point?
So then we would have to go in and look at each individual to see what they've done or?
Well, normally, normally what happens when you turn auditing on, it tracks everything. And I mean, it's a very large, you know, they create large entries. Um, the only way I would, you know, let's say you have an individual that you were interested in, like somebody deleted something and you weren't sure who did it. Well, then you could go back through the auditing trail and find out who did delete it. Okay. Or, or made a change or changed security or did anything like that. But you have to know, at least have an idea of when it happened or what happened. And then you could trace it down to an individual or a timeframe or things of that sort. But that's what that audit, uh, log is used for.
I mean, it's a pretty standard feature in, for financial systems.
I have it on.
I mean, like he's saying, like they've got it built in, they just didn't turn it on. I don't see the downside.
It's like having the security camera.
Yeah.
Right. You're not going to watch it a hundred, all day long, but if something happened.
You only check it when something goes wrong.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
All right. And then maybe, I, I, the, the module, oh, object level security? Is that what you?
Yeah, Robin, what's involved in object levels? Security.
Um, honestly, I've never done that before.
Well, there may be good reasons for that, right?
Well, that's, that's probably got to be a Roger thing, isn't it, Robin?
Yeah, that, that would, that would require my, my head programmer.
Yeah.
Is, he would have to be involved with that.
So. My experience with that is again, you have to get very fine grained with every piece of the application. If I'm, if I'm remembering correctly.
Yes, yes.
It gets very fine grained as to they can edit or they can modify or delete. And it, it goes down very, very deep.
Right.
It's very involved.
Yep.
So setting up a person gets much more complicated.
Yep.
Well, I don't know how Brighton AS400 works, but like on my ERP system, we have users, but then we also have roles. So you can define a role with certain permissions and then you can assign multiple users to that role that all have, that need the same level of access.
Or copy and.
So you only have to go down deep with the role one time. And then you, the users can be changed freely.
Well, in, in doing that, we have something kind of similar to that, but, uh, it's, uh, it takes, it takes a lot of planning because you've got, it, it, you just can't start it willy nilly. It's something that has to be looked into and then planned because you set it up and then nobody can get anything done. If it's done, if it's done incorrectly. So that's.
It takes planning and then tweaking.
Yes, sir.
Like the problem is that certain people have access to data they shouldn't have access to. Even if they don't have access to the module, they have access to queries and that allows them to get information from places they shouldn't be able to. So that's what we were talking about controlling.
Yeah.
Well, so could we? I mean, I don't think the board, let's be honest, the board isn't the, in the group of people that should make individual decisions about that. I think we should.
For security.
I agree. So I was gonna, yeah, so I was gonna toss out like back to this, like, can we get either it'd be like Carla, Laura and Stephanie to either work on creating, come together, work on creating these procedures, agree on whether to implement things like the object level or delegate somebody from your, from your teams to like serve together and come up with a, with a product?
I mean, I think that's fine, but I don't think it's really going to solve the issue. The issue is, is that I can go into Carla's printer or her Works School file and I can pull anything she has sitting out there. She hasn't deleted. Vice versa. Whether that report contains confidential information or not, we still have access. Every user has access.
But that's why.
Change the name.
I agree. That's why I said, though, and make the decisions about whether you do things like implement the object level security.
Well, with the printers, uh, that would be an easy enough fix too with the user profiles. We could take spool control away from every user and then they can't access anything but what they have access to, which is their, their own product. I mean, the printer, the printer stuff is an easy fix. In my opinion, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, that's an easy fix.
Oh, yes and no. Um, it, it's spool. So.
That's standard practice.
Yeah, that's, you know, it's, you can take spool control away and, and, but yeah, a, a normal user doesn't even need spool control. Um, but but so sometimes it's a little bit more because you've got output queues that require, you know, authorities and, and securities and stuff like that. Especially if they're like payroll, you know, where payroll reports and stuff go. Um, so it's, it's, it's a little bit more complex than, than just taking spool control away.
Okay. But here, here's what I'm trying to drive to is exactly that. Like there needs to be a group of people that's going to sit down and talk to Robin and Jim and like work this out. And I don't think it's the board of supervisors that should be doing that, but like we need people to sign up, either for y'all to delegate, like here's someone I trust to do it, or you say you're going to get in part of that group yourself.
Totally agreed.
I don't know, cause other, cause no one person owns it. So I don't know how you're going to solve it otherwise.
Well, I will say from my point of view, it has never crossed my mind since I've worked here to go into Works School and look at other people's reports to get confidence.
We don't have security for trustworthy people.
I, I don't have a, I don't feel the need to create extra red tape, but if Stephanie and Laura want to go through with that, they can. I think this is their issue. Um, I mean, I can talk to whoever about whatever, but I don't feel like.
So it doesn't concern you that people that.
I don't keep.
It doesn't concern you that people that shouldn't have access to your payroll files have access to your payroll?
They don't have access to my payroll files because I don't, if I run a query or run something and it's in my Works School file, I print the report and delete it immediately.
Yeah.
So I don't leave.
And nobody else can run that query except you.
Here's a payroll.
So that's a security procedure in itself.
That I printed today.
Well. But all payroll is public. Any, all payroll is public. So let's be clear.
But I have created a query in, but it's like seven years. So I don't know where that came from. It's in the, it's in the queries. So any query that created a query, any query, no, any query that has ever been created with the information that it holds is there until it is deleted.
To make like this.
Yeah, true. That's true. Okay.
Lots of different printers that are just hanging out there with lots of different stuff. I don't know whose printers are or whose either. Um, I mean, some of them are probably printers that have been already taken off the system.
All right. From what I'm. No, my suggestion seems not to be popular. That's fine. You're going to have to tell us, give us a suggestion then. Like, we can't solve this for you. What do you want done?
I can help you.
All right.
The treasurer, the commissioner of revenue, the finance director. How about the module at Public Works? Do we have to have somebody that's overseeing things there or can Carla look at for that for you?
Carla can do it. Please, Carla.
And then we've got social services. Tammy, I guess over there. Is that Tammy?
I mean, there are other users.
Those are, those are your four key. You've got to have your most responsible person in the department.
Right.
Just takes care of. And it's easy.
But I, I agree. That's what I thought, that's what I felt like was suggesting, but what I mean, Lauren, you're, tell, I need some feedback here. You're, you're not saying you agree, but you're not saying you disagree either.
It, it is my issue and it's actually should be any constitutional officer's issue. And, you know, I was supposed to make sure that all taxpayer data that's confidential cannot be accessed by anyone else.
So how do you want to do that?
So 26 months ago, I asked, can I have confidential, confidentiality agreements done?
Well, that's not going to prevent it either, though.
Well, as Jeff Gordon just explained in a meeting over a year ago, that's asking people to sign that they will not break the law. I mean, it is, but when you set a confidential, confidentiality agreement, you agree that if you are the person that violated it, you're the one that handles for it by law, not me. If the information has been out there because I haven't protected it by enforcing people signing confidentiality agreements, then I'm the one.
Okay. So if, if every person had a confidentiality agreement, then you wouldn't need anything changed in the system, right?
All I asked for from Faye.
Hmm. Okay.
So someone told.
It's not all the requests that you've sent, so to be clear.
Say initially that I wanted it from everybody. I said I wanted it from anybody that had security could change or set up a bright user or had security to the email in October.
All right, we haven't gotten to email here. Okay. All right, so I guess with no changes at all to the, I I don't feel, I'll have to be honest, I don't feel comfortable that there's no documented processes around this at all. I don't, I don't know how that, so I understand your point. I like confidentiality agreements. That is such a reactive, it doesn't prevent anything at all. I'm much more interested in preventing. And and I, Carla, I don't think anyone is going to try to do something deceptive. I think what we're trying to do is actually prevent people from accidentally doing something that they didn't mean to or didn't want, you know, getting a hold of information that they didn't. I don't want to put people in a position like that personally. I don't believe people are intentionally tedious. But the other thing I need to keep in mind is all the hackers that are out there. You do limit the user's roles for the purpose of also making sure that if someone gets into that, that that counts by nefarious reasons that they have limitations on what they can do too. So there are there are good reasons, even if no one in the county is going to do anything by accident even.
Is there any other places that use this system? And have it set up?
Yeah.
Did they have these issues that we're having here?
Good question.
I think. Treasurer people. Um, I think a lot of what Justin was saying is correct. I think maybe it's just maybe some turnover has happened and maybe a lot of it and that's why there's no process set up. I mean, it never crossed my mind to say, well, the treasurer is the only one that can access or ask for it to set up a new user or vice versa.
I suspect your process, like you described, is probably defined, it's just now, we just write it down.
Right.
Yeah.
Why came the system to be separated? Why do they all have to be in one?
There's not a lot of data.
Constantly?
Yes.
Jim, you are.
Creating an assessment that she has to collect on and David provides input when the something changes, yeah.
Jim, you and Robin have been listening to the conversation that is taking place. Yeah. Do you get a handle on what 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 remedies are available or what the issue is? Or issues are?
Well, you know, it's it's I I agree with having written documented procedures. I mean, I I think that protects a lot of people because that way you got something in paper and you can look at it and say, this is what we're supposed to do, especially if you have a turnover. Uh, do I believe that the system can be tightened up? Uh, absolutely. Okay. And and you're not alone. I mean, the other other localities are very similar to you and you know, I haven't had an issue like this pop up, uh, where where people have been concerned over that. Uh, over the queries and stuff, but you know, but they're very similar, so I agree that, you know, it's it basically to me, it should be the heads of the departments, but you know, I I'm not you know, I don't know much about constitutional officers and stuff and but the heads of the departments should be the ones that work this out together on how they want this secured. And work with, work with Bright, work with me and we'll we'll get it secured.
All right, so could we set an expectation that we're gonna get processes documented? And Carla, I don't think yours needs to be any different, by the way. I would say let them document the process and you copy and change the the titles in yours. Like, it ought to be pretty much the same for for everybody too, but I that goes for all of you. Like, I don't know that you need to create three separate ones. Hopefully, they're similar enough. You save yourself some work. Um, and maybe we say let's add it back to the February board workshop to come back in and get confirmation that we've got processes in place. And then in the meantime, can the three of y'all work with Robin and Jim on what are you talking about, like the tightening up of the system? Like, what can we do practically that can tighten it up? Okay, good. Let's move on. All right. Um.
Do you have any?
So are they, are they good to go?
Oh, sorry, I'm just like, oh. Yeah, I think Robin and Jim, I think we got to a good point, so we'll we'll look for Stephanie and Laura to probably take the point on it. Um, for working with you on that tightening up of the system and probably review of the procedures too, like, like I liked where Frank was going, like, or by the way, if you know counties that have great procedures and could pass them over for starting points.
Absolutely.
Confidential, then that's great too, so. Okay. And we'll move on to other topics. Thank you both for joining us tonight. Sorry to keep you.
Thank you, sir.
Want Sean Stern to talk about email?
Uh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, let's do that. Thank you for that. All right, Sean, email?
Yes, sir.
Uh, obviously. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, obviously, you've got Office 365. Um, you, it looks like you've got four or five people that are admins. Uh, along with, I say four or five, one, two, three, yeah, there's five. A couple of them have a lot more power. Uh, that would be Carla and Tammy. Um, they're exchange admins and so forth. Uh, your global admins are myself, Taylor. Um, and Derek McMillan. I'm not sure who he is. Um.
And, yeah, he's an IT outsourced person.
He's still.
Sorry, Sean, you couldn't hear us. We were asking if, we were asking if Derek is still involved with this. I don't think we're asking you. I think we're
Yeah.
Asking to, is is he still?
If if the world came crashing down, Derek would answer the telephone and he'd get it straight. But so far as day to day, month to month or whatnot, it's probably once a year that he gets a question.
And it's something Sean can't answer?
No, Sean and Sean and Bo as well.
All right.
Level.
Yeah, I don't even see Bo in the list here.
Yeah, he he's not been put in yet.
Okay.
If he needs to be, I'm not sure he needs to be there.
All right, so just cleaning up, it sounds like there's a couple of people we could probably go through and clean up and like if Derek's not gonna be doing anything regularly, he probably could be removed, is that fair? Um, can he, but can any of these administrators at any of the levels that come out as administrators, can they actually access other people's email? No.
Yes.
At what level of the, at what level of the administrator, like you said, there's different levels. All of the ones that are listed as administrators are only certain ones?
Um. With the right, with the permissions that are had, they can uh, change permissions on mailboxes, thus giving people access to a user's mailbox. So any administrator. So it's a, it's a powerful role. You want it in, you know, good hands.
Yeah, and it puts a lot of responsibility on people then too. Um. I've lost my list going through this, but.
What, this one?
Yeah, what page is that?
It's near the top. Before all the green screen. No, it's right after the Greek scene stuff.
Page thirty six, that's all I need, page thirty six, okay. I mean, so do we need this many administrators so that we're giving them all this responsibility to take on?
I would, I get a little concerned the more administrators you have. Uh, we manage a lot of systems and a lot of clients and essentially there's only two administrators and one of them being us. And then one within the company in case there's a sever relationship.
Yep.
Thanks to move.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so could we kind of similar to what we just landed on Bright, could we go off, we, uh, could you lead the effort, Sean, I guess, to go off and make some recommendations to trim this down, clean it up? And then um come back, I don't think that one should take too long, as they come back in January, come back in January and just kind of give us the update of what's been done around that, is that reasonable?
Yeah, I mean, do you want recommendations first or you want me to, and then you'll take action on the recommendations?
As opposed to? Can you just make the recognition? What if we just have that, have me make the recommendations to Taylor, Stephanie and Laura? And as long as they're they're on board, then go ahead before I, I don't want everything to have to come back to the board and get into the micro managing of of all of this.
You could.
I mean, and basically then in January, just tell us it's done. That's all we kind of need is just go, yep, it's done. Three girl are happy. Move on. And if, all right.
And those people, Taylor, Taylor, Stephanie and who?
Laura.
Okay.
And I think you mentioned Bo. I mean, I think that probably makes sense. Bo is your internal tech person that you're gonna call if you have a problem. And Sean's your external one, right?
I think Bo, that's the way we were headed.
Oh, then he got his new job.
He got his new job.
And then COVID hit.
Mm hmm.
And.
He's director of operations for schools now.
I think.
Let's do it.
When we've had, uh, when we've had some requests for, uh, for you, for example, we've gone to Sean and he's got a an assistant associate that is able to dive down deep. He actually, we had a, uh, had a request for some information from somebody whose account had been deactivated.
Mm hmm.
And it's in the level that I read it, it says this information has gone out for thirty days. Well, because Handby and Sean were able to go, because it never leaves. You just have to know where to go to find it, and they were able to dig down and get it, so that's probably why a couple of those
Yeah.
that no longer work here are still up for fear of losing something that somebody might need.
That you may not actually.
He could clean it up.
Well, I, the reason, I should have been clear that, and I wasn't, the reason I was asking that question is, you know, Sean was saying it's usually them plus one other person. But that person is the IT person. We don't have an internal IT person. I mean, maybe we don't need anybody internal to have the administrator access, like that's what we're paying Sean Stern Computing Services to do for us, right?
Yeah, and and no matter what the relationship or how it ends, if any request for access or passwords, we get it because it's yours. And, you know, it's, it's just my policy.
All right, so y'all good? Take that offline? I mean, that that one seems pretty straightforward. Just clean up the user list. Isn't it actually a system change? So just clean up the user list who has permission for what? I'm just looking around the room, sorry, that's, okay. All right. Great, I think we're done with that topic on the agenda then. Thank you all.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, good night.
Okay, all right, um. Carla, you've been hanging around a long time. Let's finish your last one, CARES expenditure report. How about that?
I was thinking of this as going at the regular meeting, but
Oh.
it's last minute that it's tonight, so I need to.
Well.
But I've got it, I've got a PDF of it and it's simple, take a second.
Oh, great. Perfect.
Um, so it's kind of, oh, you need to share it. Yeah, well, you can go ahead and note it and then I'll just, it's just one slide.
Yeah.
Bottom line is we've spent all of our CARES money. We haven't written the checks out, but the invoices are in or on their way in. And I know you had asked for more details in the four categories, so I've listed down below the level of detail that we have to report quarterly to the state.
That's excellent.
There you go. And anything over like ten thousand dollars, I've tried to list it out here, just to fix that up. So.
Nice.
And everything is tracked, what what it was spent on and can be justified?
Copies of every invoice.
All, is covered under CARES?
Yep, well.
What did you have to do with the last little miscellaneous, just getting cleaning supplies or whatever?
We didn't, I mean, honestly, we're gonna go eleven thousand over if everything comes in predicted.
Fine, that's perfect.
It's that close, yeah. So I know Sean, I've been on the CARES committee with with Carla, so and by the way, I don't know near as much as she does about it. She's the expert and has done a fabulous job running it, but we see it a little more often at least, so you know, we talked about earlier, I guess it came up with Stephanie's point, she might have left her scar, but um, she was talking about, you know, the the grants that went out, so it's total of five hundred and thirty one thousand, two hundred eighty four dollars and some cents that we gave out with documentation, to be clear, to individual citizens or businesses. And I mean, I just think that that column itself is the one that I'm personally the happiest with. Um, you know, and then approximately the same amount to the schools, because we started off with this twenty five, twenty five, twenty five, and at the end, the numbers got a tiny bit off, but five hundred and seventy three thousand to the schools to support theirs. And, you know, none of that, none of this was just given out, kind of like you were saying, Roger, is just like, oh, you need it, like, the schools had to say exactly what they were using it for. It had to be a qualified purchase. It had to have the documentation. So did the businesses and the individuals. Um. Yeah. I think this has been a great effort. It's surprising how hard it was to spend this money. Like, when you, when you get a bunch of unexpected money.
It has limitations.
That had, that's the key. It had so many limits, like, there's all these things that came up, but it would be great, like, no, can't do it, can't do it.
Lines, there, there are a few purchases that I just crossed my fingers that won't come back at us.
Yeah, I think that's the thing to answer your question, Roger, a minute ago, is we believe that everything meets the criteria. The criteria is extremely vague, interpretations changing all the time. Carla has checked anything questionable with us and other county members of administration, checked with the auditor numerous times. But it could, at the end of the day, it's gonna come down to, you know, we could get audited next year and someone has a different opinion, we just have to work through it.
I feel that all of it was was warranted purchases.
Yeah.
We didn't just have money to, you know, well, let's go blow some money. I mean, upgrading the phone system here, the sound system at the school, I think they're all things that
Legitimate, yeah.
legitimate that that, yeah, we might not have been able to you know, upgrade tomorrow, so to speak, without this money, but I I don't think that there's anything, um, certainly with the schools too. I mean, we saw their list. It was actually over that and and the main portion of their list was things that needed things, the Chromebooks, the, uh, the work schedules panels.
If you get audited and certain couple of things are found not to be okay, you just have to pay back, right? Just those things.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Or we have to eat it. I mean, the money's already spent.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
Yep.
I I don't.
Another good reason we, while we don't then go with our CIP and use that whole amount.
I I mean, I would feel okay with answering to that we have to pay for those purchases. I guess is what I'm saying. I mean, I think they were all very you know, very warranted.
Yeah.
Right.
So that's it?
Perfect. Yes, I know, the three of y'all don't see that it's mocked. I mean, you, and you came in late in the process, I was because of the election, you feel good about, you, okay, make sure we get you the information.
I didn't want to be involved in it.
I know, but just making sure you have the.
Public safety one includes, uh, rescue squad. This is where the big, big bulk of that one was.
Yeah. Which is one that took a lot of conversation about, make sure it's justified because we got conflicting information from a couple of different places. Because there are, there is no source of truth per se, it's how it's everyone interpret when Congress push through, you know, in a couple of weeks.
A hundred frequently asked questions, they've answered best.
Yeah. And even a lot of the FAQs though say are vague themselves, but well, basically the FAQs often say it depends on the situation. Yeah. All right, thank you, Carla, for doing that one. Um, I think the only thing we've got left we don't order, so is discussion of the assistant county administrator. That was your topic, by the way.
Uh, I can speak to it, but I'm not sure. Yeah, I'll start it off.
Okay, okay, perfect, that's all.
That, uh, yeah. If if it was just up to me to put in here uh, human resources that we need. Look, uh, a year ago, I would have said let's find somebody that, uh, got IT skills because we're, we struggle with that, but looks like Bo and the school uh, agreement that we came up with, he's pretty well taking care of that. Um, some other weaknesses that I see, it'd be nice to have a professional HR type person in. And we've been talking economic. And we've been talking economic development. It'd be nice to have somebody with that skill set.
Right.
So I wouldn't I would be looking, and it's just a word, but I wouldn't be looking for an assistant administrator as much as I would be looking for a deputy administrator.
Okay.
And because a deputy to me means they got, they have certain areas that they're strong in. And an assistant means they're sort of global and they can go everywhere. I'd look for somebody that could do HR. I'd look for somebody that could do economic development with a lot of energy and put them to work. I think you'd probably get more money, more bang for your buck doing that than if we just found somebody that where agreement.
Those two fields are very different.
Yeah, but we've had, we've found people in the past that have been able to do different things.
One of those, I mean, one of those uh, economic development ones, she did have a funny. Yeah, I don't think she's who you're suggesting, but I mean, she's out there.
You gotta be a people person to do both of those. You gotta, you gotta be able to manage your staff. You've got to be able to talk to strangers. It's a I think that they they might be different, but I think they, you know, my opinion. So I think it would be something that we could probably do.
So is the point of this one, I need to do tonight is to talk through what you think are the responsibilities for this first? Is that what why what you're saying you added it for? Okay. All right. Because I was thinking last, I was thinking last month's workshop when we said we all, you know, that we would move the funds that you were going, you and I think you'd asked David right right then too. And I think you think, because I remember him being put on the spot, it was like, I thought you were going to develop the job description and then come back. You're talking, is this discussion to help that? Is that what you're going?
A bunch of job descriptions from Baker Tilly and it was when you ask for an assistant administrator, you're going to get somebody that needs three years for a position and then they're going to go somewhere else and be an assistant administrator at a bigger place and then they're going to be an administrator ten, fifteen years down the road or maybe less. So I think that having somebody with a wide array of skills is probably not the best.
You're just looking to change the title. You're just asking if you can change the title for the job posting? Is that?
We.
I'm I'm just trying to be clear that we give you.
Perception of what they're.
That's right. What we've had in the past is we've had three people under me that has had very similar amounts of authority, very similar amounts of responsibility, managed very similar people. They were, you know, I don't, I don't want to use a word, you know, I'm not saying they're deputies or whatever. Key folks that you just couldn't hardly make it with. And I'm thinking maybe we bring in somebody else to at that level. Just a, just a thought.
For me, the most important thing is economic development focus. We agreed to eliminate the Economic Development Director to go with the Assistant County Administrator, but with the focus on economic development. So.
And my biggest, I definitely have that one. My biggest interest was giving you support, you know, like we talked about, there's a lot on your plate. And so if you tell me that's what you need to give you the biggest support, then I'm all for it. I'm all for it. I mean.
Kind of need somebody you can direct me. One month might be happening in economic development, then the the next month you hire a bunch of people and you deal with the resources. I
Some flexibility.
I don't think you can tie it to one job script. If you kind of combine them, that would far as a name, I mean.
The title doesn't matter.
Yeah, just long.
Yeah.
They'd work on this and then.
I see how a million runs with our tighter, everybody does multiple.
Yeah.
You know.
All right. Since.
Well, I would like to see a focus on economic development and that this person would be the the interface to the EDA. Other than that, any additional responsibilities they have doesn't answer me.
So did you get what you need? This is my.
I think that I'm hearing if you can go out and find somebody that knows how to talk to folks and work the economic development role work the HR role that that would be supportive. That's what I.
Deputy, that's cool.
I'd call him a deputy. And to be honest with you, if we were calling him a deputy, I'd say we'd come to you in a year or two and say, I've got a couple of these, these other folks that we depend on and we need to make them deputies as well.
He. And so that was actually, I agree with you. That was actually a thought going through my head is the, you know, I could think of multiple places, companies or organizations where they have multiple deputies. Like, it doesn't have to be, it can be like a deputy of this thing, of this thing, et cetera. So, yeah, like our director. Okay. All right. So it sounds like everybody's supported the direction you're heading. All right, we'll close that topic. So I think that is the last topic listed here. Do we, um, do you have a need for a closed session for any topics?
Well. The question was, can we have a closed session if we didn't advertise it? Jeff, is Jeff still on the line? Where'd you go?
We've done that quite a few workshops. I think we, what we had said in the past is can't vote on something in a workshop, which
It remains informationally.
Right, but as long, yeah. And I don't think we have any topic we're planning to vote on tonight.
I don't think anybody's going to lock us up if it happens, but I do think that we need to have a a long conversation with Jeff as to what can you do at a workshop? Because it's advertised this workshop and I I don't want.
I know in other counties they vote at workshops.
Right. So the question is, do we need a, do we need a closed session tonight or not?
I think we need.
We have a topic?
I think we do. I think we do.
All right. Topic, and I believe it's a real estate. Send back to them. Okay, so do we have them?
Do you want me to do it?
Voting, we're just, we're going to go into, we're going to go in closed session for that purpose.
Well, we have to be, we have to vote on going into closed session. I'll read it off. I move, I move.
Together at, we call this as a meeting, call it the order as a meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, we.
Everybody is here.
Confirmed, yeah.
Okay, so I moved it to Board of Supervisors convening closed session the following as permitted by Virginia Code two point two dash thirty seven eleven A one.
Get Darryl back.
Um.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
As, I'm sorry, as permitted by Virginia Code two point two dash thirty seven eleven A three, a matter involving acquisition of real property for public purposes. So you have a motion.
All right, motion and discussion on the motion. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign? All right, thank you. We'll go.
David.
Well, I don't hear who wins. I'm ready to be done. So let's see that happen. Oh, oh.
So you need to move your back.
Back.
Correct.
Yes.
Brenda always says you don't need a, Brenda always says you don't need a motion to come out of closed session. You're saying, so we're out of, we are out of closed session. We're out of closed session. We do certify. Yes, there you go. Certify that the only items we discussed were about acquisition of real property pursuant to the code section that we went into closed session for. We'll do roll call votes by district. I've been paying attention to you, man. I promise you. District one.
Uh, yes.
District two.
I certify.
District three.
Uh, certify.
District four certifies. District five.
I associate with that.
All right, thank you. Is there any need to continue the meeting? Or do we have a motion to adjourn?
I just want to move.
You move to adjourn. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Have a great night.